Thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead. All right, so Jeff, now, La Vasant, you have $350,000 more to deal with.
Okay, so if you go back to the first page in the top left, it says town of cards and transfer your reserves from surplus. I just wanted to go through this, and this is a bit of a monotonous process all of it, but it's a good story. We're not sitting here talking about how to deal with the deficit in previous fiscal year, okay? So I'm pleased about that.
No, we're talking about real money.
We're talking about money that you, by rule, when we do the audit, will have to make a resolution to assign somewhere. So you're not going to do that tonight. Are you cold, counselor?
Yeah, but, no, leave him open because it's good air. It's fine.
Okay.
I'm fine.
You're warm, counselor. Okay. So we broke it up into areas of where it originated or where we would propose it. So the first one was administration. We came under budget and wages. That usually happens when you have some turnover, you have gaps between when the person left and the new person's hired, a few things like that. So we had $38,000. Now, this is a very discretionary piece, and it's related to the piece that council itself wrote up about professional fees, is that we already have some professional fees money. Hawkins was proposing what we were calling an HR management reserve, which we thought could be there to use for, what if we did need to pay a severance to somebody? What if we did need, we had some litigation related to HR matters, and we had a small reserve? Now, this is a, what's the best way to put it? These are great reserves to talk about because it's a luxury that most communities can't have to discuss these types of reserves. Most are not discussing whether they can put a little money aside for potential litigation, right? We're very fortunate in that respect. I want to point out this one is fully discretionary if council wishes to or not. We're not hung up on it, but it's just something we paid for now because it came from unspent wages. So that's, that's what we looked at. The second part is really small. We collected $760 for the County Night Food Fund, so we'll roll it forward to put in our donations to fund 2020 donations.
Go ahead.
So, we just paid to have one of the wards do it, so this is what's left?
But at the end of 2019, that was what was in there.
Right.
We paid in 2020.
Okay, so that money's probably gone now.
A half of it.
Okay.
We only gave them about $250 extra.
Oh, I thought, okay.
Yeah, so that's okay. We still have about $500.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Then on campground, we had $8,400 that we're proposing goes to campground capital reserves. We really don't have much there, and it'll help fund this expansion that's working, we're being worked on right now. Cemetery, we had some unspent budgetary funds and perpetual care income. Now, about three years ago, the council today determined that any money that came in buying plots would be reserved in a perpetual care fund. One, that we could start to accumulate to draw interest, offset our operational costs. And two, someday we're going to buy more land for cemetery. I mean, they're down the road always, trust me, I mean, pending this pandemic, but. Sorry?
Sorry? It's a little dark humor there, Jeff.
Yeah, sorry, it was a little dark. You knew that was risky? But the point is, we will have costs that will be substantial in 50 years from now, you know, something like that. And there's nothing, we didn't have anything reserved up until a couple of years ago. That balance was zero. So that was a new piece. Civic Center, we just had some unspent, can come forward to fund. So when I, when I say roll forward, I mean, we would just bring cash in in 2020 to fund things you've already approved in 2020 to lower the tax impact. That's the, so we have almost the exact expense in 2020. We didn't spend it all in 2019, so we won't tax for it again. We'll offset with that cash. So that's what I mean by roll forward when I say that. Electrical surplus, I've made a bit of a commitment on this one. This was the profit on the job that Leonard did in Forty Mile.
Right.
And I told him that if they took that job and it was profitable, I would push to have that in his equipment reserve account for when they need new equipment. I think it's reasonable. I think it's fair. It was originated in that department. It was kind of found money because it was above and beyond the budget. So we're proposing it goes into electrical equipment reserves. Golf course, now this one I need to be clear. We had a surplus, we had unspent budget funds. It did not mean the golf course was profitable. It means we had a smaller loss than we budgeted.
Right.
So that's what that means. So we had unspent funds there. Actually, our labor was a lot lower than what we budgeted last year. It's really what it was. Ice Center, we had a few dollars there to move to, to 2020, roll to 2020. Land planning, off-site levies and always goes into a reserve by normal rule that you can always do that. And then we had this $11,000, which we're proposing to put in a planning reserve. We did not use much at all last year for external engineers. So some years we have considerable costs when we need that elevated level of engineering on our behalf, and we didn't spend much of that last year. So Brandon was able to mitigate most of it, and just the nature of our projects did need a third-party engineer.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I have a question on that, and I don't know if it's, if it's under that or if it's under the electrical, but when we were talking about for the Christmas light people and them needing more outlets on the outside.
Yeah.
Can we take some of this little fun money and put it?
We're just going to do that in our civic center.
Okay.
Maintenance operations.
Okay.
That'll be fine.
Okay.
Those will be pretty negligible costs.
Okay, I just thought I would double check.
We'll have to do it in-house, and then we'll bring in an electrician to do the permitting and inspection and the cost of the money.
Okay, thank you.
We had a, and I cannot remember the backstory to this. We had budgeted to reseal the stepple in the library, and it didn't, and there was a reason, and I can't remember. Counselor Brown?
Yeah, I, I'm trying to remember exactly what the reason was. It was, the timing just wasn't right to do that. There was something going on here with this building too at the same time, and we said that we would put it off, that would be for a year or so.
Okay.
And then we would go ahead and do it.
Yeah, I just, I knew we had a discussion.
Now, I'll let you give you a better idea of exactly what it was, and, but I just know that we had put that money aside, that we were going to do it. We had so many ridiculous quotes on that.
Yeah, yeah, quotes were a lot.
You know, one, and one was eighty-seven thousand dollars down to $12,000.
Yeah. So we just rolled it forward and put the expense in 2020.
Yeah.
That's what we've done at this point.
Yeah.
And then on Parks and Recreation, we have $10,000 that still needs to be done. We have red shale that will be done. These are all roll forwards, all three of these.
I think I remember now what it was, because we were trying to do, they were going to do a different entryway in there, and that was going to kind of throw off what we were doing there, so they wanted to get that one done first before they moved to have it. I'm pretty sure that that's what it was.
Okay. So the Parks and Recreation wants to roll forward, and then Public Works, this was that big one. This is a bit of a catch-all. We have it as unspent outfall repairs, wages miscellaneous, lean heavy on that miscellaneous. So when there is, you know, a couple hundred accounts, we've kind of funneled them all. When, when there's 2,000 here and 1,000 here and 500 here, they've all funneled here along with, for example, last year, we had 40,000 unspent on outfall line repairs. So that's a big chunk of it, and, and things like that. So, so it was a big catch-all. The wastewater receiving study, now this one I want to talk about for just a minute because it has consequences. And what I mean is, last year, Alberta Environment told us that we were going to be required to do what's called a receiving study on our St. Mary's Outfall. And what it does is, over a long period of time, it measures the content of the effluent that goes into the river. To make sure that your sulfur levels, your phosphorus levels, all that is okay, and it's not damaging the, the river, fair enough. They pushed that off this year. They, they told us that they weren't going to require this year, but that it was coming. But here's, here's the rub on that one, is if the results come back that our current effluent treatment is not meeting the requirements that they wish at the outfall, they will require us to do a major upgrade within a short amount of time on sewer plant. And I'm not talking a $10,000 upgrade, I'm talking a $4 million upgrade.
Millions.
That type of idea. Bart's getting cost right now, actually, but, so this is a nervous study for us, right? The only thing, if there's a bright side, if there's an upside to it, we think we can get at least 50% grant through the Alberta Water Wastewater Partnership, up to 75% potentially, especially if it's ordered by Alberta Environment. So we think we get a good chunk of it in grant, which is great. And the other thing it will do, the rotating biological controllers that we use now are not a technology that's put in now. I mean, they still are effective, and they're used everywhere because that's what they did in the 70s and 80s, but they use a different system now. The new membrane system would double our capacity in the same footprint. So we would still use the same building, we would change everything within it, but have double the treatment capacity, excuse me, that we do today. So that's one thing that would be good about switching to a new technology, is doubling the capacity we currently have, but it comes at a price. So I just throw that one out because I assure you, we will be speaking in the next few months more about that receiving study, and when, when the other shoe drops on having to do that.
Yeah, and that's coming.
Unspent, unspent snow removal, we have $15,000. Now, we had a number of years ago created a snow removal reserve, and it's been depleted down a little bit, so we're proposing to put this back in to build it up.
Yes.
We had, oh, there was a pump repair, and there's another one here, unspent replace the blower in Pump House 1. So we're proposing to roll those forward again because Bart found that they're limping along, they haven't died, and so we might as well keep pushing them until they die. But they've been able to kind of keep them going and, and keep them going along, and so Bart didn't want to pull the trigger prematurely on replacing them when they, it could be tomorrow.
Question?
Yeah.
What, what is it? It's, it's a?
With that, with the pump house blower replacement, is that a safety condition where we have to get fresh air, whatever, taken out of that pump house or put back in? Is that become a safety issue?
No, no, it's not that. Like I said, it's working, but it could be tomorrow, it could be a year from now. So we're just kind of watching that one. And then skid steer replacement, we didn't do, we have a program with, I think it's Case, where you pay so much a year, and then they replace major components on your skid steer. We didn't need to do it last year, so we were able to just hiatus one year, so they'll do it in 2020. So we're just saying, we'll have the expense in 2020, but we'll bring money we already taxed for, to pay for. And then unspent garbage funds, we were able to piecemeal and repair a bunch of dumpsters and a few things and so on. My guess is that they didn't have to spend much in new hydrolog dumpsters, so we're proposing that council reserve. So the total.
Question?
Yep.
Jeff, again, in our public works reserves, could any of that go to this lead study?
Yes, in short, it could. That's a bit on hiatus right now too, because we don't want to go into people's homes until all the pandemics sort of.
Be geared on the road, right?
Yeah. To that, counselor, we have not proposed funding for that yet because it came up after you passed budget, so it'll be on the mill rate discussion. So we'll propose funding options at mill rate time.
All right, thank you.
Okay, yeah, that's a good point, counselor. Thank you for bringing that up.
So, there are a couple pieces, like 351,000 and the 38,000 at the top, that really aren't, they are really discretionary at this point in time. Those are kind of that true budgetary surplus. They weren't things that didn't get done, they were places we came in under, and we don't need to assign them to something specific. So I, it's a great discussion to be able to have versus the alternative, obviously. And so that's where we'd like a little direction on where we may want to look at some of that, that surplus, if we're not going to do it on the outfall.
Okay, so, counselor Court, maybe, I'll, I'll put you there on the spot. You wanted the outfall line repairs to be paid from our line of credit in order to reserve money just in case if the MSI was going to drop to a crazy low number. Is that what you wanted to do?
Well, my thinking is, we're already, as, as a payer, utility payer, I'm already used to paying that amount of money for my water, et cetera, et cetera, and sewer. So I would just leave it at that, and I am concerned about down the road. We're looking at increases quite substantially in our, probably in our policing and in our, decreasing in our MSI funding. So I would like to see a little bit bigger reserve than rather a little smaller reserve. That's where I'm looking at it from, so.
Okay, so you would want it to be more or less in a general reserve than in that case?
That is correct.
You've, you've been building over the last four years that major utility capital reserve, so last year you allocated a large chunk of the surplus into major utility capital. So we budgeted in 2019 to have $64,000 to that account, and I recall, actually, the discussion was that was quite low compared to what we wanted to put in, but then when we looked at surplus at the end of the year, so go back a year ago, we thought, that's a chance to see if you want to amend it any further. So we do.
Well, I just don't, sorry.
Go ahead.
I just don't want any, I don't want any surprises. I like the idea of a, of a substantial reserve. I look at our neighbors to the east and just look at the problems they're running into. I don't want to run into those problems.
There is wisdom in that. Counselor Self?
So Jeff, how many users outside of the town of Carts and Proper would actually pay those utility rates on wastewater?
I don't know if there's any actually on wastewater. The only one that might be is the Sage Building.
Yeah, I think they're on the septic.
Yeah, and I.
Well, that's really unfortunate.
Yeah, sorry, sorry. And we'll talk a bit about that straight ahead too, but.
All right.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any on sewer, almost everybody's on septic.
So Jeff, you were saying that for utilities, we might want to add a little bit of money to the reserve?
So if you go to the next sheet, which is the detailed reserve listing, so it's the one that turns the landscape.
Right.
This shows, the first one, the 410, 260 is really our larger reserve amounts, well, for public works, and you have your council group capital, which we didn't use any in 2019, so we didn't have to put any in. You have your major utility capital, which we taxed $64,000 to go in there, but that is below the average rate you've been putting in it over the last 40 years.
Okay, how much did we used to put? About 100,000?
You were seeking to be about 133,000 or so on rolling average. That was kind of the goal of the time.
Right, so maybe we need to do that.
And then you have, again, this goes through a number of reserves, and you, we can move some around, we can tweak those as we see fit. The other option you have is to roll cash forward to mitigate tax in 2020.
Yeah.
Right, so that, this is cash that's sitting there, that can be used as funding for things that's not currently funding in 2020.
So Jeff, regarding that idea, in a time where the government is trying to find packages and ways to help the businesses and everybody else with what's going on right now, I am wondering what we as a town could do. For example, a thought that came to my mind is that this year, we put 2% increase beyond and above because we wanted to kind of buffer ourselves.
You have an inflationary piece in your tax revenue, so we're taxing 2% more this year than last year.
Right, and how much does it come to?
About $55,000 is all this.
Right, but this is 2% still for everybody.
Correct.
So I'm wondering if we have a council couldn't say 55,000 or that amount that you talked about.
Roughly, sorry, yes.
Could be reserved in order not to have that inflationary component this year, to kind of flatten it a little bit in order to add to the safety package that people are getting from the province and the feds, just a gesture for the people in town and the businesses. I don't know how you would feel about reserving 55,000 or so, let's say 60,000, in order not to have that 2% inflation.
For next year, or for this year?
It would be in this year mill rate, it would kind of change a mill rate a little bit.
Right. Now, one thing I would just caveat that with is, well, I shouldn't say unfortunately, it's absolutely doable. When we do the mill rate calculations, and we'll show you this when we get there, it doesn't always apply exactly, but it would mitigate the increase. So you, you are already passing through almost a 3% increase on policing, right? So we're rolling through a $76,000 charge for policing, something like that. Your school requisition increase was just removed, so that's a good thing.
Yeah.
So that was 3.4% or something that we're able now not to pass on to the end user, so that's good. And then you had, we had budgeted a 2% tax revenue increase. Now, one thing I tried to get today, so when, when we look at 2% tax revenue increase, that revenue is captured in two ways, well, a number of ways, but mostly two ways with taxes. One is new assessment, so new stuff in 2019 that we can tax in 2020, and changes to the assessment of existing buildings. We didn't have, we only had about, well, Joe's gonna chuckle because we had a bet that I lost on the exact number today, but that's another story. We had about $1.07 million in new assessment last year. The fact matter is, it doesn't translate too much in taxation. It's like, in residential rate, it's like seven grand. Right, so when you look at the 2% increase in taxation revenue, it appears, and our numbers, my numbers are preliminary, I admit that right now, it appears that most of that will be coming from increases of assessment of the existing real estate. We've had years where our increase has been really almost covered by new assessment, which has been great, so Joe and Jane's existing citizen didn't have to take that up, but it does appear that in 2020, that will largely be taken up by the existing assessment.
So if we were to say we won't put that 2%, the new assessment would cover that increase?
No, no, I'm saying actually the opposite of that.
Okay, all right.
That you don't have enough new assessment to cover the proportion of that increase in 2020.
Oh, this year, this year, last year we had, this year we don't, okay.
What I'm saying is, you would need to take cash to cover the majority of that 2% increase.
Okay, so, but that would be, if we were to take it out of that 300 and, I don't know what you have, it would be a very small amount, but it might be a gesture at a time of drastic measures that need to be taken all over the place. We cannot just appear like, oh, well, so what? No, I think we need a little bit of a heart here. That's my feeling.
Well, and we're going to have more discussion on potential.
Deferral of all of taxes, yeah.
Later. But yes, you absolutely have discretion to use some of that surplus, or heavens all of that surplus to offset taxation the next year. I don't recommend you do that, but you certainly have that discretion.
Okay, so how would you feel to at least not tax for that 2% increase? Counselor Brown?
Well, I've been doing some thinking about all this, and, you know, there's some big concerns out there.
Yeah, no kidding.
I mean, there's a lot of people in our community that, that are getting laid off, and there's, there are going to be some big concerns, and, you know, most people, when they see that you're trying to do something, they really appreciate that. It doesn't matter what the percentage is. The fact that you're trying to do something to help mitigate the problem and relieve it goes a long ways in people's mind, and I would be in support of your suggestion.
Counselor Self?
I think there's a fundamental principle, Mayor, and that's, if you have more money that you've, you've taxed for a certain level, but you have money left over, you should give it back to the taxpayer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think this is a way of giving it back to the taxpayer because we taxed them.
Yeah. Are you feeling comfortable with that, Counselor Bentry, Counselor Court?
I think.
Go ahead, Counselor.
I agree 100% with Counselor Self, that we need to look at giving it back to our taxpayer.
Okay, so, Counselor Court, how do you feel about it?
I, I did a little bit of math on it. It's not a huge sum, but I do like the idea that, you know, it's a difficult year. We need to show some, some consideration that we're, that we're in step with the people as well, so I agree with it.
Thank you. So maybe we can try to see this, I mean, unless you have more suggestions, Jeff?
So, just want to clear, we're looking, are you looking at any more than offsetting the budgeted increase? So we, we projected to tax for more revenue. Are you suggesting, let's make our revenue essentially our tax revenue be exactly as it was in 2019?
What I'm trying to see is, what is the impact also? I mean, a year where people are laid off and, and businesses are suffering, there we passing on to pay taxes, to pay the policing costs through taxes, and that's another $75,000. That is a question we also have to, to put in our mind. Is that something this year, as Counselor Self said, that we should absorb and pay through that bed of reserve? The rest we need to reserve, no doubt.
Yeah.
But that's a maximum, I think we could, if we could go that much more, then we're really lowering by 5% the impact globally.
If I may, if I may, just briefly.
Go ahead.
We drop it, we drop it down this year, what if we need a bigger increase next year?
Well, this.
If we go to zero this year, what if something comes, suddenly we got to raise it to 4% next year?
Okay, you totally have the right question, because that is what we need to look at. Is 3% too much? Is 1.5% half? We, we kind of flow through 1.5% of that requisition and we tax for the rest? Or, or do we let next year can take care of itself with the extra reserve we have?
I mean, you could also pick a dollar amount and say, look, I'll, I'll throw one out just as an example.
$100,000 maybe?
We're going to take $100,000 and this can offset taxation for next year. Well, it's going to offset your inflationary increase.
Yeah, and a portion of the tax, of the policing.
Roughly, right? So I don't know, you just want to pick a dollar?
All right, so 55,075 is 130,000, right? So is that 130,000 we want to go through, or is that 100?
I think as a taxpayer, I myself personally would rather have, if there's going to be little steps, I would rather have a little step and then another little step next year rather than, you know, not, just pay my normal taxes this year and then next year hit 4% or 5%, that would make me hate you. So I would rather, I mean, right?
I remember your policing costs are $50,000 or next year.
I know, because they're jumping, I know. So I, I feel like we need to get a happy medium. I don't think it should be wiped completely clean because we know, I mean, yes, we've lost jobs, yes, all of these things are horrible and they're happening, but at the same time, it doesn't just affect this year, it's going to affect years. So I think we have to look at this a little more, a little wider in our perspective.
The only thing we don't know is what the government is going to do, but, so is 100,000 what it is? It would be just about taking care of 5, about 20% of?
Three and a half?
Yeah.
I'm pulling some rough numbers here, Counselor.
3.5%.
Listen to what our government usually tells us, they're telling us that we're, every community in Alberta is going to be looking at tax deferrals.
Yeah, that too.
So this is going to be affecting this whole discussion that we're, that we're having right, right now, and maybe we need to seriously look at some of this surplus to help offset that tax that, that we're going to take off.
Okay.
If $100,000 is the figure, so be it.
Yeah, but.
Whatever, whatever we're comfortable, I'm, I'm okay with.
But.
I'm a taxpayer too, and I realize, Counselor Brown's in the same boat, we're all in the same boat. We're all going to, you know, it's going to come down, but next year it's going to go up, right?
Yeah, but Counselor, you need to remember, a deferral is not a gift.
No, I realize that, but it's still going to be just as tough.
Right.
For the person who maybe still laid off to pay it.
But what it means for us as a community is that we have the cash flow to carry on our operation without wondering where the next dollar is coming from.
Yeah.
That's all what it means, really.
Well.
It's, it's an amazing situation to be in, and we'll be able to do that for people.
We're, we're in a good situation, unlike a lot of communities in New York.
Yeah, but.
So what we should do is have some heart, have some compassion, and do what the best we can.
Okay.
Whatever that is.
I'm good.
So which level are you comfortable with? 100 or 130?
I think the 100.
100? Counselor Self, 100? Counselor Do? Councillor Drew?
Yeah, sure.
Councillor Bantry, councillor?
Yeah.
100?
Yep.
Okay, 100 it is. Okay. So for $100,000, we're going to try to have a tax relief package? And that's a way we will kind of advertise it to our people. We are advertising, I mean...
We're getting a motion on that, Craig? Or we'll present it to you in the mill rate budget?
Yeah. So that is something we can write a little blurb about.
I was gonna say, we have a communication piece to go with that.
Yeah, we will do that.
So when we talk about this, is it just businesses or is it everyone?
It's across the board.
You have the option to apply it to whichever mill rate you choose. Am I speaking out of school?
I don't pay taxes.
That's true, I get it. You can, when we start analyzing mill rate impact, you can apply it where you wish.
Thank you, where you go.
We've generally just done it across the board.
Yeah.
But we can look at what that impacts each mill rate too, we'll give you that chance to look and see at that.
I think it's reasonable.
I was talking to Jeff about that very item earlier on during the day, and it's, Jeff always has words of caution, and I appreciate that because we can be looking at things now rather than with the big picture. And changing the mill rate too much for the, for the business is what is the impact on the long term, right? That represents about 18% of our tax revenue, about something like that, not tons, but...
So Jeff, you received an email from Peter Cassarello about Southgrew's participation in our resumption plan and wanting to know if we wanted to participate to help out the collective Southgrew area and, well, actually Southern Alberta.
What would you like to do? Can you tell us a little bit?
Well, just, I got an email today that Southgrew and other groups have appeared...
Southwest.
Alberta, yeah.
Is going to be doing some...
Economic development, Lesbridge as well.
Business continuity and economic recovery type of...
Oh, okay.
And getting some tools, knowledge in the area. I already emailed Angel and asked if she'd be participating in it, so she's excited about that and needed to go.
They're gonna ask the, each, like, each community, they might ask Angel to participate as the lead on one particular item. So we would be, our skin in the game would be not only our contributions to Southgrew and what they're putting forward for money, but also we would have our economic development officer having some skin in the game with respect to her time.
Well, that's, I kind of like the idea. Yeah, thank you.
Not just another pretty face, Mayor.
I didn't assign you to that committee to be a pretty face, did you figure it out?
Well, let's just overstate the obvious.
Are you speaking of Angel?
Yeah.
Yes. I was speaking of Angel.
I know.
Okay.
I just, the question that I asked about taxes was not because I own the flower shop.
Oh, you know what?
I don't pay taxes, I pay rent, and the person that owns the building pays taxes.
No, no, regardless, councillor Drew, I appreciate the question because at this time, we need people who are in the business world to kind of help us understand what's going on down there. We're not there, obviously, but you are.
But councillor Drew, I think the point that has to be front and center in communication in the province that started down this is if they're going to issue WCB, if they're gonna issue education tax relief, if you are not the owner of the business, those savings are intended to flow through to you. That's what we're being cautious about. So if we're gonna mitigate tax, we need to have in our communication that for landlords, that needs to mitigate increases for your tenants. And that's the hope, is we're trying to get it down to the business operator, right? So just, it's a good point because it's starting to be better, and we hear a lot at the provincial level.
And in, in fact, you'll be the perfect person to let us know.
No pressure.
So I'm hearing that we will look at $100,000 of the surplus to go towards a tax increase mitigation in 2020 budgeted mill rate. And the difference, are you, do you, us for now, because you always have discretion over reserves, I'm just gonna make that clear, this isn't the end of the discussion today, do you want a major utility capital for now? And we'll look at, if there's something comes up, it's emergent, you can transfer it.
Agreed.
Are you okay with that, councillors?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for your contribution on that one. It's, I can't tell you how much I appreciate the finance department and Jill, Jeff, and all of you who work at helping us, Bart, at finding efficiencies, so much so that we can have reserve of that salt at the end of the year. What a position to find ourselves in.
So do we need to make a motion on that, or are we, are you just gonna just prepare? I think I'll just take the feedback. You will have to make a resolution to approve the reserves listing on April 14th, when we do the audit presentation, so you'll see it formally then.
Yeah, the audit was supposed to happen today with the committee, but was postponed because there is one particular item that still needs a little bit of work.
Yeah, we're just challenged on one little transfer of assets and then once that's done, we'll be ready.
So the, the challenge really will come probably in the letter to the...
Be the management letter.
To the management is not an issue with the way we've done our taxes or, or business.
Before we leave this, can I ask Jeff one more question?
Please.
Jeff, okay, so I didn't get anywhere with the wastewater. How about the water? Does any of the money that we charge on water utilities go to capital?
Oh, yeah, certainly. Yeah, shoot, I don't have the right sheet in front of me, but in our, I will answer that question for you because I can pull it up here. We have, I can tell you how much in any given year from water rate proceeds offsets our capital expenses.
So, but it doesn't go into any capital reserves, or that is?
We're usually, hold on, I can answer that question a little better here.
Let me just cut to the chase. All the freeloaders in the surrounding area, are they paying for any of our water capital?
I thought you were coming to that.
And that rate is contributing to capital. I can't tell you the exact dollar from those, I'm using air quotes, freeloaders in the surrounding area, but yes, to answer your question in short.
Perfect.
Thank you.
No, it's, it's interesting. All right, so thank you so much, that was an excellent discussion. Under seven?
Mayor, just so you know, it's almost 6:30, we do have some food here. If you want to research, we can probably get through a couple by 6:30, it's up to you.
Councillors, what do you want to do? I won't ask you over there what you want to do, it's up to us to make the decision.
Do you deliver?
Sorry.
Hey, this isn't Petahut, Mayor.
So do you want to take a break and get some to eat? Yeah? Okay, all right. So can you...
I make a motion, I make a motion to take a 15-minute break.
Okay.
They'll just call us back, I assume?
Yeah, we'll call you back. All in favor?
You can listen to us.
Thank you.
Go have your peanut butter sandwich.
Yeah.
I got, I got better than that, buddy.
All right, thank you so much.